Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I state my concerns about this proposed change. And while I do agree that there does need to be a change here, that it should no longer be an elected position, and it should be an appointed legislative assistant to the council. And the appointment should be made by the council president, and it should be an individual who is chosen, I think as several speakers have addressed and others have talked about, from a list of individuals who scored a certain level on the civil service test. And not only that, but that once the person is appointed to avoid political issues, that they cannot be removed except for cause, and that then there's, there would only be another one appointed if that person either retired or left for cause or otherwise. I understand some of the concerns with regard to managing that department and having a hierarchy, but I think that in watching other legislative bodies, and watching elected officials and clerks that support that legislative body, that those issues are worked through every day. Also, with regard to the city clerk position, I don't agree with removal of Section 3.3, which is appointment of support staff, which is unsolvable, or to a minimum amount, both because of budgetary reasons and also because of just the hours that are needed or not needed from time to time. That being said, and maintaining a balance with regard to legislative body having some control over its staff, I agree with the two-thirds needed to confirm that appointment. That'll make sure that you don't have a, you know, majority of 50 percent plus one simply controlling an appointment. I move that we recommend to the council at whole, to recommend to the Charter Revision Commission, that the office of city clerk, as is presented, I'm sorry, let me try to make this motion very succinct, that the changes as proposed be changed as follows: that the appointment of legislative assistant be made by the council president, and that the appointee must be someone who has been subjected to and passed and scored top three or five, whatever the commission may choose, on that list, and that they may only be removed for cause.
Second?
Part of that motion may be in conflict with the Invincible Player Relations Act, as well as civil service rules and regulations, where we have a rule of six. The motion is a rule of three, so perhaps...
Whatever would be in compliance with the appropriate statutory regulation ordinances and union requirements...
I didn't have the number there.
Right. With that, I would, from my motion, remove the number.
The second would accept that?
Yes. I think all the perkins we can do, I think, is decide. But yeah, listen. Mr. President? I would, thank you, Mr. President. I was and remain ambivalent about the elimination of the city clerk as an elected official. This is not going to burn a desire with me. My, as you know, or may not know, was on the original ad hoc that recommended the creation of the Charter Revision Commission in the first place. And most of my initial concerns had to do with the language buried inside the charter, buried policy walks up. It didn't have much to do with the actual nuts and bolts of running the city. They had to do with the internal document, and its internal or lack of internal logic. And this is not something that the CRC chose to address to any great extent. They went in a direction I did not foresee, which brought us to where we are tonight, before your terms, the firing of the city clerk and creation of a legislative position. But I'll accept the will of the commission and this body, that the position needs to gain independence. The logic there escapes me a little bit, because really nothing is more independent than an elected official. They sometimes don't even have to show up for work. And maybe that's a problem. I'm not casting any aspersions, but the idea, I guess, is to give the voters by proxy some a little bit more direct control over the head of the office, so having said that. It would seem to me that if we are serious about eliminating this position, this is a big deal. A city clerk has been a part of Danbury for generations. It may be a little confusing when people call 311, they want to get a merit certificate, they're direct, the town clerk, but be that as it may, the city clerk has been an important and integral part of the government forever, at least the 1960s, when the town and the city combined. So it would seem to me that if we are serious about taking this fairly drastic step or radical step and eliminating that position, that we should be getting something in return for that. If we're going to lose the independence of an elected official vis-à-vis the direct connection with constituents, we should, as members of the council, to protect the council, have a little bit more, say, selection process. And also the elimination process, if you, if you look at the language in the section, while it does require a two-thirds majority to validate the mayor's pick, that the person essentially, after they have been appointed, served the pleasure of the mayor, and can be fired at will. And this does not, if you were in that position, and you were in a city where there is a healthy discourse between these two bodies, the administrative and the legislative, and you were ostensibly working for one of those bodies, but your essentially employment history was controlled by the other, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to assume that the person in their own vested self-interest might lean away from one and towards another. So I agree with Councilman Sadi's recommendation. I think that we can leave the details to the commission and the Corporation Council, but I think the will of this council should take this motion very seriously. This is our staff we're talking about. We're not talking about the mayor's chief of staff, or somebody that's working downstairs. We're talking about our own staff. And I think that if we're in a liaison with our own staff, we should be pretty sure we're comfortable with this person, to have some control over their employment history. Thank you.
I too agree. This is a good step in streamlining government, which is a primary function of the Charter Revision Commission, is to bring it, so that it streamlines it for the people, operates better for the people. And the volunteers that serve on the common council need someone that is free from the pressures, the political pressures that exist. Civil service does that, as long as, as well as having a dedicated individual to help council members do their research on ad hoc committees and various issues, so that I think it's a good step. I'm not sure, sure, I need a little clarification, excuse me. In the charter as it exists now, the council also had the opportunity to hire additional staff as well. And I would, along with the administrative assistant being hired by the council president, approved by the council by two-thirds vote, I just wonder if that could be added to that recommendation, or did I understand Mr. Sadi's original proposal to include that?
Just to clarify, if I may, in response to taking my time to speak, it wasn't part of my discussion, but it was not in my motion, and with the indulgence of the second to the motion, I would incorporate a recommendation that Section 3.3 remain as part of my motion.
And if I may continue with the second... And the rationale there is that, you know, we have people that get sick and they need replacements at times, and that can be a problem, so that the president should have the authority to bring in temporary assistants, or whatever that case may be, or even have a full-time temporary assistant to the administrative assistant in the event something major should happen, because the historical continuity of the operation of the council rests in full-time employees. And I know we come in as elected officials and think we can really set the world on fire, but our reliance really is on the paid staff telling us how, when, when we should notice a public hearing, and all of that type of thing. And we should protect our interests in behalf of the citizens to do that. So I'm in favor of the council having its, appointing its own assistant, as well as having additional staff if necessary to cover that area. I understand some of the mayor's rationale, but this is almost like, how would he like me to fire his secretary? This is the common council's only individual that works directly for the common council, and I think that it would be undermining ourselves to go against this type of... Thank you.
Very quickly, there are a couple of points I just want to address. First of all, there's nothing in the proposed language by the commission that does not preclude the council from hiring additional staff. Even though it was taken out, there was a very pointed discussion at the Charter Revision Commission that said you certainly can budget for more, you could add more here in the budget process, particularly as the city grows, you may need one, two, or three. So whether you add the language now in or out really won't make a difference. The option is always there for the council to do that. I will say also, that you cannot arbitrarily fire people in public service. Just because the language says the mayor shall appoint and may remove, doesn't mean you can walk in tomorrow and say, hi, I don't like you, you're fired. Employees have rights. They have more rights than you can possibly imagine, because I go through this every day. And I think you can count on the number of, on my hand, the number of people we've been able to terminate for cause, let alone whether or not it's not for cause. So the layer of protection is always there with somebody, and this image of sort of any mayor coming in and saying, well, you're out of here, you're fired, simply just isn't the case. You just can't fire somebody without adding a cause. That notion has to be processed, right? They have all kinds of rights before the Connecticut Department of Labor, et cetera, et cetera, and we deal with them every day. And then finally, the third issue is that on this issue, there is a challenge for us, in the sense that there is nobody on site to manage the employee, and then how would you pick somebody? And we've had situations in the past, where we've had runaway employees that have really answered to no one. And unfortunately, I'm the one in the building, or my predecessor, or the one before me or after me, who's the one in the building, that has to deal with whether or not the office is open or not, whether or not the proper documents are available, whether or not they're getting the services they need on a daily basis. So the intent here was not to usurp the authority of the council. And let's not forget that the mayor, this is a Congress where we have, you know, separate legislative bodies, separate executive bodies. The mayor is the presiding officer of the council. There's a reason why the framers of the charter crafted it that way. It's almost like a hybrid system, because in some towns, the mayor doesn't participate in council meetings. In, you know, Brooklyn, where the mayor, or the first electman runs the legislative body, it's completely different. So the idea here was to create another sort of hybrid system, to provide some hierarchy within the building as to who is responsive and answerable to whom. And certainly, the council can add staff if they feel that's necessary as the city grows and they need more services, or maybe they want somebody just for constituent service, they can certainly add that. They can find the money nowadays, it's tough, but it could be done if you want...
Mr. Mayor, a point of order. I believe there's other sections in the charter that prohibiting, prohibit the hiring, other than yourself as mayor, or the mayor, and that the exception contained within the charter references that point, so that it must be contained within the charter in order for the council to go upon itself and hire anybody. They just can't offer...
Oh, I know, right. I want to be clear about that. You're absolutely right. You can appropriate, you can appropriate the funding to hire...
Well, we can't hire anybody. You're the primary source of...
Well, correct. And certainly, if the council's will was to fund an extra position there, you could do that without the language, or you could add the language in and have the implied part of the way, which would make a difference. But I know that the commission looked at that issue when there was a lot of discussion about whether you might need extra help. You may not be able to get the job done with just one person, particularly as the city grows. But the real rationale here was, again, to provide a hierarchy within the building, so that there's responsiveness when there's an issue, whether it's elective and under the old system, that frankly was not the case, and that was problematic. And let me just say that, you know, the civil service is certainly a good vehicle to be able to do that. There's no problem in promulgating a task and having folks come in and take a task and select it from the top six, present the person for appointment, appoint an ad hoc committee, interview the person, then make a full recommendation in two-thirds vote of the council. It's a very high standard to be on anybody. So they're really going to have to know this stuff, and they're going to have to be well-trained and ready to go. So I just want to share what the logic is.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just clarification for me. If, according to the recommendation of the charter commission, this position would be appointed by the mayor, I guess it's a question to you, Mayor Brown, when this person would be appointed by yourself, would they be answering to the council president, or would be answering to the mayor?
That is an age-old question, a history, and I don't know if you want to know.
I know, that's the key, that's what I'm...
Okay. The objective would be, on a day-to-day basis, of running the office, if there are time, the office is open, servicing the public, that would be a function of the mayor. On council business, that would be a function of the council president. So there would be, that person would serve as the conduit between the mayor, who oftentimes places items on the agenda, who oftentimes works very closely with the speaker to get notifications out to folks and all that other stuff, and the council president, as well as the council at large, who may need assistance with other work, or whatever the issue might be, constituent service, et cetera.
So would that be listed in the job description, sir?
It absolutely would. The day-to-day reporting would be to the chief administrator of the building, and the common council business reporting would be to the council president.
Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, sort of the template that the mayor laid out, where you want to make sure somebody's here on time, somebody as a civil servant needs to report, needs to not overextend their lunch, and those things, is absolutely correct. And what he just outlined here with regard to the council's business being a reportable matter to the council president and to the council by the legislative assistant is also correct. I still think that that can function with the appointment by the council president, and I'll just leave it at that. I don't think those two contract that they can be blessed. Thank you.
Anything else? You might want to roll call vote on this as well? Can you repeat the motion?
Maybe go ahead. So make it up.
Well, one thing I did discuss with Corporation Council, with Attorney Pinter, is that the way I changed the motion in a strict setting wouldn't have been appropriate, because this is a recommendation. Yes, normally it'd have to be amended to the motion, but as this is a recommendation, less formal, the motion, along with Mr. Levy's recommendation that was accepted by the second, is to accept the elimination of the position of city clerk and the establishment of a legislative assistant. But that legislative assistant be appointed by the council president, subject to all the union requirements, statutes, and ordinances...
All right, you don't want to make that a union position.
Okay. The intent is to, so going, appointed by the council president, the individual must pass a civil service exam and score within the appropriate number on that list, and may only be removed for cause, which is currently the case for civil service. And then finally, to maintain Section 3.3, which is the appointment of additional staff as needed.
How are we...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may want to include non-union position in that? Would that be... Well, you know, the problem we're going to have is the union's going to make a play for that position. So that's why it really should be, they are all appointee, because once you take out an appointed position, it's a council appointment, they're very welcome to come in and make a play for the position. There'd be not a lot we can do about it.
Mr. Respecte? Thank you, Mr. President. I think Councilman Sadi has the right idea and everything, but I think the mayor also has a point, that we may not want this person to be a union, to get involved with the union, and that maybe, perhaps that's something we need to take a look at, as how we can get her, if we can get around that, that part of it. Thank you.
I had one question myself through Corporation Council or through the mayor's office. If a test is run in civil service for that, automatically hand the person towards the direction of being a member of the union, just by nature of the process of hiring?
I think that the, I think what'll happen is we'll end up having to negotiate over that position, whether or not, that's, again, the reason why we wanted to leave it as a mayoral appointee with confirmation by the council at a two-thirds level. Because, you know, and testing is not necessarily a problem. You know, you could set up your own, we could set up our own testing methodology, even if we wanted to have an ad hoc committee that would serve as a test, to do final interviews or however, you know, then make a recommendation to the full council as a whole, you know, under my letter, as the final recommendation, under my appointment. But my concern is that by taking the appointing authority away from the mayor, even through a tested process, very well could end up placing this position in the union, it'll be scored, and then, you know, there's a whole other set of rules that apply to the employment. I don't know, I don't know if, I think, no disrespect to our unions, they're terrific, but there's the flexibility here, night meetings, things like that, that you're going to need out of that position, that are going to become problematic. That was why we left it as an appointed position.
Thank you, Mayor Brown.
We've been discussing this for about 15 minutes, and my guess is the Charter Revision Commission's been battling this particular issue back and forth for several months. I know that back in August, or maybe even before that, June or July, this came up, and it's been on the minds of a lot of electors in Danbury for many, many years. Can I assume, and I'll put this question up through, Rick, can I assume that they have been advised on several of these processes, eliminate the, I mean, the first step is to make a decision to eliminate the city clerk. You've now done that, and the next step is, what are we going to do now? How are we going to replace that position? So now you have many meetings or discussions or advice from the administration, Corporation Council, how you can actually go about filling that position. It may be that this motion jumped the gun. I mean, I seconded the motion, but from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we have to come up with in several minutes, something that they grappled with for several months. I would be, if, if I'm not going to ask the council to withdraw the motion, but I would be comfortable sending this back to the Charter Revision Commission to come up with a structure that allows the council to make this election with mayoral input, but with more input from the council than we have now, but satisfy the issues that the mayor has, vis-à-vis unions and things like that. My guess is that they've probably already determined some of this, or you have some idea where we're going. I'm not all that comfortable dictating to you guys tonight, right now, on the spot, how you have to fill this position, but I'm sure the information's out there, and what do we have, 10 or 15 days to come up with? They might be more apt to come up with something a little bit more appropriate and flexible. I keep hearing, well, we can't do this, and, you know, take that language out of the motion, you know? So have a way on us.
The answer is that the Charter Revision Commission did explore various models, and came up with this proposal. And once it became clear to me that this was the direction, it fit very comfortably into a mold that already existed: no civil service, mayoral appointment. At that point, I didn't need to explore issues of union representation. If, however, you're going to step into a completely different mold, many of these questions are going to come up, and they're going to come up for the first time. And I have, thank you very much for alerting me to the problems that I'm going to be facing, but I will take them very seriously.
What would be easier, simply to recommend that the Charter Revision Commission revisits this issue, or accept Mr. Sadi's motion with a detailed explanation of how they're supposed to do that?
I don't think easier is really the right way to approach it. I think the more, the more advice you can give, the more specific your recommendation, the happier the majority of you may be with the result as it comes back to you. You don't have to make your recommendation specific, but then you leave open the possibility that you won't like what you get back.
All right, thank you.
I just want to share this with the council, whether it's myself, a predecessor, a subsequent mayor, we can never have a system or a situation again where a employee says, I'm not going to listen to you. I'm talking about day-to-day administrative matter. I'm not going to listen to you. I don't work for you. I work for the council president. That's a problem, in trying to manage this building on a day-to-day basis. We can never go back to that system again, and that's really what the heart and the crux of this is all about. And it's not fair to a future mayor to put them into that position. Now, a lot of the residents who are put in that position, I understand that, but maybe, perhaps, you know, Mr. Sadi might be onto something, by promulgating the list via civil service, will provide another layer, if I can work this out with the union, could provide another layer to ensure that really it's a civil service system that's making the appointment under the signatory of the mayor, with the, obviously, two-thirds vote by the council and all of the other stuff represented. But you just can't have a situation like we've had in the past, where people say, I work for the council president, I don't work for you. I mean, it just doesn't, it just doesn't work for us. And it won't work for me, it won't work for my predecessor, and it certainly won't work for a subsequent mayor. So it's just something...
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I will tell you all that when I went before the Charter Revision Commission, I had asked them to leave the city clerk's position alone. If you, they chose to rename it as a legislative assistant, that would be fine, but I saw both sides of this issue as being problematic, and I saw that, you know, turning it over to the executive branch for appointment, I saw that as a problem as council president, and I saw also us appointing our own clerk as a problem through civil service, through hiring rules, and what happens when the council president comes on and has issues with the clerk that the previous council appointed? And who is going to want that job for a possible two-year term, or possibly less, if they get hired mid-term and get bugged out? So in the end, the process that the Charter Revision recommended seemed to be, to be the best at the time. I can totally understand what Mr. Sadi's saying, and I totally believe that the clerk is the clerk of the council, and Shapton will be the clerk of the council, and especially if it's appointed by the council with a two-thirds majority vote. So I will, I will tell you that I am not too sure of which side I was happy with. I prefer the clerk being appointed, elected by the voters of the public. And, but tonight, I'm sitting here, and I like Mr. Sadi's motion to some extent, I like the Charter Revision Commission's report and recommendation to some extent. So I would tell you, it's been a very difficult decision for me, but I think that in the end, when it comes down to it, I think the appointment by the mayor's office would probably be the most logical because of the direct supervision that the mayor's office could have, that I, as president, can't provide, because I'm not here in the building, I'm, this is a total volunteer position for me, and I have a full-time job. So someone has to make sure that the office is open, and that the person is there, and lunch hours aren't being overextended, and work's being done, and I will, and will, in that situation, will make sure that the clerk is working for the council. That would be my job as president.
Could we just have the motion read one more time, so we know what's going on here?
To accept the elimination of the city clerk of established legislative assistant appointment by council president with a civil service exam, the members of the council can remove for cause and to maintain 3.3. So I just a little part of yours.
If I may, as a follow-up, if this motion were to pass, it then gets, I'm sorry. If we were to pass this motion this evening on a vote, that motion would then be sent back to the Charter Revision Commission for them to work on.
back to the Charter Revision Commission for them to work on. Mike Rippe.
It was a pretty specific motion that Mr. Sadi made, it wasn't too on his direction, recommendation.
This is a point of order through the chair to Corporation Council. Notwithstanding the specificity of a motion, the Charter Revision Commission can do with it what it wants, correct? Thank you.
The commission can reject your recommendation.
No, no, I have a point, but I want to talk to you.
Mr. Sadi.
I'm not withdrawing my motion, but as we're discussing this, I can see the members of the Charter Revision Commission very diligently, and I don't mean that pejoratively, you guys are doing this, writing down a lot of notes here. And the reason I ask that point, that question, a point of order, is that to the extent that one of our motions in this deliberative process up here on a very substantive document doesn't make sense, runs into legal roadblocks, Corporation Council and others, or councils of the commission will advise them, and they'll craft and fashion something, hopefully, that addresses those concerns. So, well, the specificity of a motion is for the, for the purpose of communicating a desire, what I meant by, sort of, and I said this informally to Councilman Sadi, sort of chewing on it, they'll flesh that out as best they can within the legal parameters, and if something is incorrect, they're going to come back there. If they don't like it, they might come back with a completely opposite position. It is a recommendation, and I absolutely understand, and I said before, the issue of administering the day-to-day operation of that person, you know, punching in, punching out, figuratively, not literally. But the intent here, and also the concern of somebody being released or terminated because of a change in the council president's, well, a mayor's changed too. So the purpose would be to protect them generally, not just, I don't think, by having one of the mayor points or the council president points, that protection's not necessarily there, and the attempt would be to have some sort of sustainment of that position, unless there's a reason to remove it, as the mayor outlined, but it's very difficult to reach that burden. I'll close my mouth then, thank you.